As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the work session Stanton City Council meeting to order on June 10th, 2021. On May 6th, 2021, I received a request from Councillor Dole to participate remotely in the June 10th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary disability medical condition that prevents her physical attendance meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Dole, Councillor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda Number Three.
Madam Mayor. Brandon wants to go ahead.
Councillor Mead.
Pursuant to City Council, Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three, I move to allow Carolyn Councillor Dole to remotely participate in the June 10th, 2021 Stan City Council meeting due to a temporary disability medical condition.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, Councillor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Councillor Dole, can you advise what location you are participating in tonight's meeting?
1003 East Beverly Street, Stanton.
Thank you. Did everyone on the city council as well as the audience, could you hear Councillor Dole?
Yes.
Right, thank you. Okay, that takes us to item number one, a consideration of work session and regular meeting agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to amend the Stanton City Council regular agenda to item E for a discussion of the Stanton Crossing property and as well the work session agenda will be as is, as printed.
Right, there's a motion on the floor to add item E to the regular meeting agenda. Can you repeat that, please, Vice Mayor Robertson?
To amend, well, work session agenda will be as printed and I'm moving to amend this City Council, amend the regular agenda to add an item E for a discussion of the Stanton Crossing property.
Madam Mayor, if I may, could we take that amendment just by itself on a vote?
Oh, sure.
So, and then if the amendment's approved to, or not, to then consider the agendas.
Okay, all right.
My, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move to amend the Stanton City Council regular agenda to add item E for a discussion of the Stanton Crossing property.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councillor Holmes is second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks.
Councillor Mead.
Are there any material related to this discussion?
Is there any material related to this discussion? Vice Mayor Robertson.
At this point, there is no material. This is simply just to talk about Stanton Crossing and allow any parties that may have something to say about it, express their opinion.
So council will not have any facts related to this discussion?
At this point, I don't believe there's any, any facts that I, that I know of. It's just, it's, it's to allow interested parties in the thing to talk.
Okay, so it's a discussion.
It's a discussion.
Shouldn't that be a work session item then?
Mr. Blair.
Councillor Mead, it can be a work session item and typically I think it would be a work session. I count.
I reckon the reason I, the reckoning I do that, Ms. Mead, is that this will allow us to spend all of our time on working on the matters or the agenda items, excuse me, memorandum items, and let us try to work through those as fast as we can and then so that to afford us time to get to the regular agenda, which will then we can have more time to discuss that freely.
So there's no plan to make a motion to vote on any item?
Is there any plan to vote? It's just a discussion, not a consideration?
Not a consideration. This is a discussion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Dole.
No.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is a presentation on potential for safety improvement for 10 city intersections, eight downtown and two West Beverly Street. Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to approve the emotion.
I'm ready to roll.
To approve.
That's right. My apologies.
Madam Mayor.
If I can, Mr. Vice Mayor Robertson, to, just to echo what the city attorney was saying, I think now what he's looking for is a motion to approve the work session agenda as presented.
Right.
And.
And as amended.
The regular, yes, sir.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the work session agenda as printed and the regular meeting agenda as amended.
All right, since I'm jumping the gun on this one, let me back up. Point of clarification, so we have actually an active motion on the floor. Is this a revised motion that the Vice Mayor is making?
No, the, the regular meeting agenda was just amended and so now it's, it's another motion, it's a motion to approve the work session as well as the amended regular session.
All right. Thank you for the point of clarification. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
All right, there's a second by Councillor Holmes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Now we're ready to go on to item number two. A presentation on potential for safety improvement for 10 city intersections, eight downtown and two on West Beverly Street. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor and members of council, allow me to introduce to you Adam Campbell, who is the Assistant District Planner with the Virginia Department of Transportation here in the Stanton District Office located here in the city. And Adam will introduce this item and the consultant who will make the presentation.
Hey, welcome.
We're going to pull down the screen or just show it up here?
We can, we'll pull down.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council and city staff. I want to thank you all for this opportunity to provide you with an update on where we stand with our VDOT Star study within the city. Joining me this evening is Nathan Umberger. He is our project manager with, for the study with ATCS and Ann Cundy with the Stanton Augusta-Wainsbury MPO is also here with us. She's on the study team. I'm just going to provide a quick overview of what the Stars program is and then I'll turn it over to Nathan to get into the details of the recommendations the study team has come, come up with. So here's just a quick agenda on what we'll be presenting, talking about this evening. Again, I serve as the project manager for VDOT. Nathan serves as the project manager for ATCS. Okay, so the Stars program is one of VDOT's primary statewide planning study programs. It stands for Strategically Targeted and Affordable Roadway Solutions. You know, we like our acronyms. Each year, Central Office, VDOT Central Office comes out with a list of candidates across the state based on safety and congestion measures. The different VDOT districts then review those candidates, work with our local partners and stakeholders, and then make an application for certain project locations to, to study. This year, you may recall in 2018, we did another STAR study with the city of Stanton on Greenville Avenue, which came up with some successful recommendations that were just recommended for funding through this round of Smart Scale. So this one's a little different. Instead of doing a corridor, we decided to focus on intersections within the downtown area and two out on West Beverly that had high safety needs. So that's what we're focused on with this study. And I want you to remember two more, two more acronyms. One is PSI, which is Potential for Safety Improvement. That's a measure that the state uses to look at the anticipated number of accidents at a location based on roadway characteristics and roadway volumes and then what the number of accidents that actually occur. And the delta between that, if you have more than what's anticipated based on the characteristics, then you receive a Potential for Safety Improvement rank. So this year, we have eight of our 10 intersections have a PSI ranking within the district. So those are the ones we wanted to focus on from a safety standpoint. And also, there's two other locations downtown that we added for PSAP, which stands for Pedestrian Safety Action Plan. So those two intersections rose to the top from a pedestrian standpoint. Again, this is a data-driven approach study. It's got a wider range of study team members from VDOT, city staff, city planning, city public works, city police force is also on the study team, ATCS, the MPO, and Bright Transit are all members of the study team. And now we're at a location, so these are the 10 intersections we're studying. There's three on Johnson Street, right in the downtown area, three on Beverly Street, right in the downtown area, one at Frederick and Augusta, and then we start moving out West Beverly. We have Jefferson, Gruber, and then Hayes is the one in the middle there on West Beverly. So these are the ones we're focusing on. And like I said, we're, we're focusing on safety, but given the local context, the historic nature of downtown and the city's recent initiatives with, with bike ped planning and greenway planning, we really wanted to incorporate those aspects into our recommendations. So that's where we're at in the process. We've collected our data. We've come up with recommendations to address the needs that have been identified. And now we're coming to you tonight to present those recommendations to get input from, from council before we take it to public outreach, which is our next step that's going to occur later this summer. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Nathan Umberger.
Thanks, Adam. And it's great to be here tonight. Again, appreciate the opportunity to share progress with you. Certainly, we've been putting in a lot of work and endeavoring to do so even during COVID-19 environment. So it's been a lot of fun, a lot of virtual meetings. Adam already mentioned all the folks involved, so it's been a really great effort and we're super excited to, to be here and share. So what, before I kind of dive into each of the intersections, you know, kind of in the interest of time, we tried to kind of group them. So like Adam mentioned, we've kind of got the Johnson Street, the downtown Beverly Street, and then we kind of looked at Frederick Augusta and Jefferson Beverly, kind of similar as approaching the downtown area, and then number nine and number 10 that you see both Gruber and Hayes have some similar characteristics. So it kind of in the interest of, of keeping some themes and in, in the interest of time, that's how we'll be presenting these. Just some quick background information that you can see as far as the process we've walked through. Adam really gave you a lot of good detail about Stars, but it's really about a very detailed process and thorough look at a lot of different information. Obviously, this year was a big challenge in terms of how do we analyze a lot of things when normally one of the first things we would do is collect a lot of data. So we had to make some adjustments to try to consider. So what you'll see in a lot of the study material is we consider previous data from before the pandemic that we used and adjusted counts that we collected so that we made sure we were as accurate as possible in considering the impacts of our improvements. We spent a lot of time in the field, looking at a number of different areas, making observations, getting a good feel for why things may be the way they are. We used a lot of VDOT data, crash data from police reports to detail as much as we could. And so we used all that to really kind of build what the existing conditions are and then use that as a launching point to help us with developing alternatives that we're here to present tonight. This just gives you some examples. We have this level of effort at all 10 intersections. So certainly I'm trying to condense six months and, you know, several hours of meetings into a quick presentation so you guys get a feel. We definitely have all of this that's available, these presentations, but you can see on the left is an example of just the level that we go to with plotting each and every crash so that we can see where the patterns are, what, what's going on, whether they're angle crashes, rear end crashes, pedestrian crashes. We look at when they happen during the day, what, what severity they are, what the weather conditions were, just to name a few, to kind of help us determine. The map that you, or the graph you see at the bottom is where we kind of lay those out by time of day, you know, to see where the patterns are related to congestion or lighting, various other factors. And then in the upper right, you can see where we really get into the amount of vehicles that are making turns at the intersection and what kind of level of service and we have operate. So again, I won't share that with you for all 10, but just wanted to give you kind of an example of, of the work we've gone through with these. Adam mentioned, we, we definitely considered strongly a lot of the plans that the city has done. A lot of work is already in place. So you can kind of see on these maps where we've highlighted how our intersections lay out with both the pedestrian network, proposed bicycle connectivity, and the greenway. So we considered that strongly and the need for potential bike and pedestrian improvements as part of the safety initiatives. So with that, jump into our Johnson Street intersections first. Each opening slide, you'll see the, the intersections we'll talk about here. Like Adam mentioned, hopefully you got enough acronyms. Maybe we can give you a quiz later to see if you remember all of them. But PSAP, that's Pedestrian Safety Action. So really there was, those two intersections are located on the corridor here as well as New Street, which ranks in that PSI or Potential for Safety Improvement level. So a couple of alternatives, which you'll see is a lot of these, we have a very multimodal-focused alternative. And so what you see here is a kind of conversion and a re-envisioning of the corridor that incorporates all three intersections. And so this would involve adding bike lanes, improving crossings for pedestrians, new crosswalks, improved crosswalks, really upgrading our radii so that pedestrians have a lot safer and easier passage of the corridor as well as accommodating bicycles. At New Street, we have kind of a newer initiative where due to the low volume of the signal, we would propose converting that to what's called a hawk signal or a hybrid actuated walk that's for pedestrians specifically. So when pedestrians would activate the signal, would stop traffic, pedestrians could cross safely, but because the volumes are fairly low, we didn't really see the need to have a full stop and go signal there since both streets kind of run away from the intersection. So very low volumes that would actually help pedestrian safety as well as operations of the intersection. So we listed a few of those key features. Again, we have very detailed analysis that shows, you know, this would work very well as well as improve some safety because we would kind of smooth out the lanes and just make the overall feel of the corridor consistent. So, and I'll, I'll introduce our other alternative here and then if you have questions, I'll kind of pause in between each just to make sure you don't forget anything along the way. So our second one, and you'll see a similar theme with some other intersections, is where we really, we didn't look at the corridor so much specifically, but we focused just more in on the intersections themselves, a little bit more than a vacuum, if you will, to just kind of look at some of the specific needs and, and operational characteristics there. And so you can see these usually involve a little bit more targeted sidewalk improvements, you know, some improved radii, as well as you can see at Augusta and Johnson, we proposed some changing the lanes a little bit. We know that right turn is very heavy, so if we move the throes to the left side of the road, it'll allow that traffic to potentially use that a little bit more efficiently. So it's a little bit more target on the operation side while still making some safety improvements by kind of better delineating the intersection, improving our geometrics. You can see at New Street, we found, it's kind of interesting when we dig into the data at one intersection, sometimes intersections nearby, which you'll see later as well, pop up. And so the intersection of Calorama Street actually demonstrated some issues and the curve in the road is, is actually causing drivers to kind of miss the curve in some cases. So we included some countermeasures to try to address those specific needs. So any questions on those two alternatives?
Councillor Holmes.
Yes, my business is actually right there on the New Street and we have so many people who go out of our parking lot and go the wrong way on New Street because when you look up the hill, you see red lights facing you. So, and it's, and it's really, there's a sign there says one way, but if you're in your car, it's really hard to see. It's one thing when you're outside, but when you turn, I wish there was a better way of, because a lot of people get tickets because they go out that way and, and they have no idea. And I just didn't. Make that more clear to people when they.
Yep, absolutely. And you can see in the lower right, we have some examples where we've added like some pavement marking arrows to try to help emphasize. We also have, you know, part of our final outcomes of this study, depending on, you know, what the preferred alternatives would be to take our concepts to a kind of next level of, of design to help with implementation. So I think exactly what you're talking about is, is exactly what we're looking to do with our final, final products as well. So.
Do you think that'll, that'll help?
Oh, yeah. Anything, well, you know, one thing is you don't really want to make it two-way because you need the parking there on the side for the businesses and there's not that much traffic. Anyway, I think it was turned that way because the bus station used to be there and it was, been left that way ever since. Yes, but if you could do something to maybe mark the street or something so people would know they're going the wrong way.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yes, sir.
Maybe not so much on this one, but the previous one, it looked like from Lewis to Beverly, you had, looked like dual, I think, bike lanes, one on either side, then it appeared from that down, there's only one on one side. So am I, am I reading that?
Turned out through the, so we would have.
Yeah.
Bike lanes on both sides through these. So, yeah.
That, okay, I was looking for the same, I didn't.
Okay, looking for the symbols there.
Yeah, they weren't on the top portion of it.
Okay, yeah, sometimes they get hidden a little bit and whatnot. So, but yeah, we would definitely do detailed plans and you can see the cross-section there that demonstrates, you know, the, the width of the bike lanes and the width of the travel lanes that would be proposed there, just to give you kind of a profile feel for it.
So there would not be a turn lane at, at Augusta?
That's correct. That's correct. And we've actually kind of done the modeling with that because the volumes and what we would be able to do to adjust some signal timing, we feel the left turn volumes are fairly low to where that would not, you know, would, would not be, you know, dishonest and say it's going to have no impact because, you know, certainly there'd be a few seconds more on average, you know, occasionally you'll have a vehicle. But what this does is it really kind of, because that intersection's very tight and we know there's some issues with the geometric turns, that's the other benefit here, that we're able to kind of smooth those lanes out so people aren't quite as tight to the sidewalk, which we heard was some issues as well.
No, it would make it hard for businesses that, that are around that curve because that, that's a one-way street. You can't, you can't come in on the other end and you've got the depot there and then the wedding and there's offices. I just wonder how that'll affect them. I mean, for people that live here, you know, eventually we would learn, but you know, a lot, that's a really a big turn right there.
But we wouldn't prohibit it. So if, if that's the, we wouldn't take that turn away. It's just when you, right, right. You just wouldn't necessarily.
Wouldn't that back traffic up?
So again, our traffic models show that occasionally you'll get a few extra seconds, but that the opposing traffic is not so heavy that you won't have gaps to make that turn. So, so again, I think our numbers show you might go from an average of 12 to 15 seconds of delay to like 18 to 20, you know, so certainly a little bit, you know, we're not going to, not going to lie and say it's, you know, no impact at all, but we, we do think it would be minimal based on the safety you would get and the benefits of, of the multimodal pedestrian and bicycle improvements.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Just, just one more time, but I reckon I'm concerned about, especially between Augusta and, it seems like there's, the road is a little narrower there, but I'm just concerned, is there truly enough thing, right? If you happen at one time happen to have bikes on both sides of that, you got sidewalk, bikes on both side and cars happen to be going, is there enough space in there for safety?
Yes, sir. We've got about 30 feet. So that's where you can kind of see the drawing. We would use about a five-foot bike lane on each side, which meets VDOT standards as well as 10-foot travel lanes. So, and the benefit of the 10-foot travel lanes is, you know, they still, you know, decent traveling, but it helps encourage slower speeds, you know, especially around Calorama and the curve. We know, you know, that's contributed to some crash activity there. So it kind of helps give you that downtown, you know, try to get drivers to go a little slower, you know, we all work together. So that's a benefit that's shown some positive impacts in, in a lot of areas. So wider travel lanes usually just encourage higher speeds is, is what we've kind of seen. So, sure, any other questions for me?
Just got one more now. One at, at the North Central, what is, is a white block there? Is that just?
So that would be kind of a median island. That's a great question. The benefit of that is when pedestrians cross the road, you know, normally they have to cross both lanes kind of all at once.
Like a little island.
Exactly. It's a little refuge island that would allow a pedestrian to just look to their left, you know, cross 10 feet, have an area to safely, you know, stand. And again, kind of with the 10-foot lanes, to Vice Mayor Robertson's, you know, point about the width, you know, if we kind of help channelize that traffic, it kind of helps again, slow the traffic a little bit, just gives pedestrians a safer environment to cross there. So, yeah, great question. I'm sorry, I forgot to point that out.
It wouldn't really affect turning into the parking lot or nothing like that.
Correct. We would not restrict any movements. That's correct.
Any additional questions?
Good. So, all right, so we'll move next to our downtown Beverly intersections. And so you can see here, all of these do have some higher safety concerns relative to the pedestrian, especially with some higher ranks around 2023, New Street a little lower with the 99. But again, we kind of grouped these because we looked at some very specific corridor improvements. Again, we kind of had intersections, but we know a lot of these work together. And so certainly one of the things we heard early, we know during COVID, you know, city has been using Beverly in some unique ways to help the businesses. You know, we knew we didn't want to go that far, but certainly we looked at, are we using the pavement, you know, as best we could based on, you know, the crash data and some different things you can see. So what you see at the top, these are just a couple, again, cross-sections to hopefully help visualize. So the left is today. And so today, you know, we have one parking lane on the one side and then two full travel lanes. What you see there next to it would be the potential that, you know, we're looking at to revise this to have a single travel lane and then use our current right lane for a mix of parking, loading and unloading zones as well as potential for pedestrian bumpouts to allow safer crossings of the road and, and a number of different items that could really help us use this for a more business-friendly environment. Our data really showed that the, the traffic volumes kind of really fall well below what you, you would need for two lanes. Normally, traffic anywhere from 1,200 vehicles or more, a, a single lane can handle. And usually even in the most peak periods downtown, even after adjusting for COVID, you know, we were maybe four to 500 vehicles. So we're kind of really below that threshold that two lanes works. And so certainly we heard from city staff and a number of others that, hey, we have trucks stopped in this lane a lot of times anyway, causes a lot of turbulence, people moving in and out of traffic. You know, again, we've also heard parking, I think you mentioned, is, is a big need for businesses. So how can we kind of re-envision this? And, and this has a safety benefit because at intersections, the more lanes we have, the more conflict points we have. So the further you have to cross, the more vehicles potentially coming in different locations, that can really contribute to a, a less safe environment. So this would have an opportunity to kind of normalize some flow, give us some real business-friendly impacts, give us some real nice pedestrian impacts. You can see these are areas where, you know, in the middle of the block, you know, a lot of pedestrians like to cross just where's convenient. I park here, I want to go to the restaurant across the street. I don't want to go down the road all the way and, and come back. So this allows us some areas for, for those type of improvements, you know, if we deem necessary. This is very conceptual. And so at the top, you can see where we could work with different cross-sections. We could have parking on both sides, you know, we could have those, those areas. You could even use them if you had a restaurant that, you know, some places during the pandemic have used those areas for some great outdoor seating areas, you know, in, in how you have during the closure. And then some areas where we would use the loading zone. So it would allow us to really take that corridor, improve safety and, and provide a lot of benefits, we think, for both pedestrians and motorists. So this is one concept. Part of this, again, similar to New Street and Johnson, looking at the data, really Lewis Street and New Street really don't kind of demonstrate the need for a traffic signal. So we actually think those would be much safer as always stops. Certainly, we know in the downtown environment, you know, site distance, you know, we wouldn't want to make it a two-way with free-flow traffic, but we actually think traffic would move a little more efficiently with an always stop as well as being much safer, especially Lewis Street is a very high crash location. So we felt that one. And New Street also being two one-way streets, you know, the demand there is very low. So we thought those were two that could benefit from consideration of going to always stop control. So our other one is again, similar to Johnson Street, would be looking at, again, more So our other one is again, similar to Johnson Street would be looking at, again, more targeted improvements just at the intersections. And so you can see what we would look at here is again, trying to improve pedestrian safety and also channelize our vehicles for speed with some improvements on our corners here, we would have some signal improvements and and upgrades as well as, you know, some signing and marking, you know, potential to look at ways to make our stop bars, crossings, similar to the one way that Councilman Holmes mentioned, you know, similar here on a on Augusta and New Street, we'd have some of those type of markings to try to emphasize those to improve safety and communication to our motorists. So this one being kind of a little bit lower down, but again, just taking a little bit more targeted approach to those intersections. So with that, any questions about those two?
Councillor Holmes?
Yes, the with the width of the road, would would Beverly be wider, one lane, would that lane be wider? Because you do have a lot of big trucks, transfer trucks come through there. And if it's just one lane, I would be a little worried about it blocking traffic to unload because they.
Sure. Yep. So with the existing lane, we actually typically for a parking or loading, you can actually narrow that down a little bit. So your one residual lane could be a little wider than it is today. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes.
Any additional questions?
Yes, in this block between Central and Augusta, where you have the sidewalk bump out. So will there be parking on either side of that street on a normal basis?
So you're talking about in this area?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. And so this is, you know, kind of keep in mind a concept, certainly, you know, if this were an option that were a preferred alternative that we wanted to pursue, we would work very closely, you know, with city staff and and present a little more detail. These are really meant to just kind of show examples, but to directly answer your question, yes, these would be parking zones, you know, we're showing areas here. You know, kind of around the intersections where I believe there's transit on this corridor as well, right? So there's a bus stop that could benefit strongly from an area to pick up and drop off. So we would have designated loading zones, unloading zones and and bus stops that could use the space much more safely. So so would add parking, again, add opportunities for UPS, other deliveries, FedEx, you know, don't want to be exclusive and only advertise for one, right? But it would allow allow that to be done a lot more safely and efficiently and then work with our intersections better.
Is that the only block that you're proposing these bump outs?
It could be, you know, that you would want to include it between Lewis and Central, you know, there'd be opportunity between Augusta and New, certainly if, you know, kind of the business uses. You know, you you thought those would be beneficial, those could certainly be designed in. Again, this was kind of intended as just a little bit of an example of of what those could look like, but we would definitely work to finalize and detail the appropriate locations for them.
Thanks. Councillor Mead.
Did you give any consideration to Stanton's hearing impaired population? As you were thinking about these intersections and traffic lights and that sort of thing?
Yes. So a number of our intersection improvements where a signal would be retained include what's called APS upgrades, which is auditory pedestrian signals. I'm sure maybe you've seen those in some other places that have ways that, you know, they have either a beep or a message that is is useful. Well, I guess you're all talking about audacity. That's more blind, forgive me. But all these do include ADA upgrades. So they would include ADA improvements wherever needed to make sure we're we're looking at those as well.
Right. Any additional questions or comments?
Very good. So we'll jump ahead to Frederick Street, Augusta and West Beverly and Jefferson. And again, these we we figured were some similar in that they kind of transition into town. And I can speed up a little bit if we're tight on time. We looked at a couple of options here. You'll see this one's a similar multimodal where we would take Frederick Street. And again, we have two lanes. We feel that would be useful. We could do it an actual two way bike lane because we would be able to have a full lane there. And if being that it's one way, you wouldn't necessarily want bicyclists going opposite directions, you know, right next to a car. So would be better to have a separated bike lane. So that's certainly an option. And then looking at converting Central and Frederick to an always stop as well. Again, here we've got some more targeted improvements. Again, we think both of these really from a signal volume standpoint, given we have one way roads that are relatively low volume, blend themselves much better to being always stop control. And then these are ones we feel as kind of sort of gateway areas to the downtown. There's potential for these to be mini roundabouts. And so you can see we've done some detailed design to see how these could fit. And keeping in mind minimizing any impacts, looking to keep it within kind of the existing right away. This picture here is actually from the town of Warrington, one that they did that is fairly similar in size. You see that can be very nicely done. You know, you can have aesthetic treatments on the asphalt, but these I know trucks usually, you know, that might be a question you're having, are they okay? Well, you keep that central island fairly not exactly flush, you know, certainly not something you want to just, you know, joyride over, but it allows you to mount that center island when needed for a larger vehicle. They treat the intersection more as an always stop. So these can again, be a nice gateway feature that provides some aesthetics as well as these show really nice operational benefits in the long term for traffic to move. And of course, we know roundabouts are generally much safer by kind of eliminating some conflicts. So those are the couple of concepts. Again, a few more here. We added in the mini roundabouts just because there's a little bit more space than some of the others. Certainly, they are still a little tighter, but you know, these are in the 55 to 60 range, which is, you know, not something that's necessarily a neighborhood street. So.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
These roundabouts wouldn't take any more land that's already unused.
Correct, correct. These all kind of work within generally the existing footprint of the pavement to to make sure we're not not taking any business property or or additional right away. We certainly know that costs money.
Right. We are running short on time. And this is a lot of information for the council to absorb. So Mr. Rosenberg, can you give some guidance on what the next step will be concerning this matter for the council and the public?
Well, I think I'll ask Mr. Campbell to do you want to take just, there's three more slides here and perhaps we can cover those very quickly without council questions and then Adam can come back up and tell you what the next steps will be.
Okay.
Yes. And so just lastly, we have Hayes and Park Street and Grubert. These mostly, again, we can do this quickly because these are pretty simple with some targeted signal and pedestrian improvements. What we did see here when we looked at the intersection is there's actually a lot of crash activity around Park Boulevard. There's no turn lane there and and a lot of traffic comes out with the close proximity. So we were recommending at minimum, looking at a dedicated left turn lane or potentially given there's alternative routes, you know, to exit adjacent streets, you know, such as Peyton or, you know, further up on the road coming out from the park. You may look at restricting this to either just like left in, if we remove the left out, that would solve a lot of the safety problems here as well. And then lastly, at Grubert, again, we see the opportunity for some signal improvements here. Flashing yellow arrow signals would be a nice upgrade as well as some better pedestrian and sidewalk connectivity to navigate around the intersection. Knowing the shopping center, hopefully, you know, will redevelop very near future. You know, for the city would be a great upgrade, but that would help your operations and and safety here as well as we propose some marking improvements to, again, help with the corridor and just how it flows. So those are a little more simpler. So finish up there.
All right. Can you let us know what the next steps will be? Right there. Thank you.
You can see the progress we've made so far. We started in October, kicked things off and we've had again, a lot of progress to date. We just mostly recently met in May. Like Adam said, we're to the public involvement phase. So that's where we come to both you and and planning a Metro Quest survey to solicit public input on their thoughts on these improvements. Because we certainly want support and consensus for whatever we may, you know, want to propose in the end and and help give you a great design and recommendations on the backend. You know, whether it needs smart scale approval or or further design and consideration, that's that's really our goal to help improve things in the city. So I'll turn it back over to Adam and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah. So if they haven't already done so, staff can get you a copy of the presentation and you all can have, it is a lot of information. You can certainly have as much time as you need to review it and then just get your comments to staff and they can get them to us. And then we can make any necessary adjustments before we, we're going to start building this online survey, which we've had great success with with getting a lot of public input in our last two years or so. So we're very excited. This will be the first time we do the survey in Stanton. So we'll wait to hear from back from you all before we we plan that to go further with. But that's okay.
All right. Yes, thank you. The Vice Mayor wanted to say something very quickly.
One quick question. This is probably an impossible answer, but based on we decide just bare minimum whole hog, what are we looking at ballpark? Dollar wise?
Dollar wise. So again, some of the more targeted solutions you see there are, you know, between 50 and 100,000 dollars, you know, depending on the full corridor, you know, again, you said it's an impossible question because it really depends on, you know, contracting resources you use, different things. So, you know, I hate to give you a whole number really for everything, but you know, we try to keep it, like Adam mentioned, stars is affordable. So you know, that is a major goal. When we do this, you can coordinate it with paving projects. That way it keeps it cost very low. There's a lot of opportunities to keep that low, but we try to keep it to about 50 to 100,000. Again, the mini roundabouts would be a little higher depending on what you did. Again, you know, what kind of process they follow through if you pursue like a smart scale approach and and a full folded full development. So you know, again, knowing it's public forum, I don't want to give you a number, but we do try to keep it very affordable and that will be part of our next phase. So as we develop what you tell us is preferred, we will do, you know, cost estimates to give you a good feel. And that way, hopefully with 10 intersections, you can kind of prioritize and and develop what direction you want to go. And we're here to assist with trying to pursue funding because we love to see these things get implemented. So hopefully answer you. Sorry to not give you a full answer.
That that's fine.
I'll just note that the Greenville Avenue improvements that were just funded through the state program, that was 2 million, right at 2 million. So that was very, it did a very good job in the competition for the funding. So we would expect similar results for for any recommendation out of this.
Right. Thank you. We appreciate the presentation and we look forward to seeing the progress.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three is a discussion of city council procedure memorandum. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a continuation of your efforts at your last work session. And as was the case then, Mr. Blair will guide you through the remaining procedure memorandum.
Welcome, Mr. Blair.
Good evening or good early evening, Mayor Oaks and council. Want to pick up where we left off the last work session. What I want to do is just again, go through sort of the procedure that we followed then. I want to go through each of these in chronological order. And as last time, I had presented some what I think are technical changes and then councillors had also offered their thoughts on changes that they would like. I will summarize those changes that the councillors have proposed and then allow each councillor who made the the suggestion to carry it from there. Did a couple of housekeeping items I wanted to go over. Ms. Doll, our council member Doll had asked about the idea of a super majority requirement to change these procedures. And since that's just a general question, I did want to let the council know that there's a state code provision 15.2-1420 that states that all council actions are to be accomplished by a majority vote of the council, except as provided in state law. And there's nothing in state law that requires a super majority for council procedures. So I don't believe the council could legally have a requirement for a super majority to change these procedures based on that state code section. There have also, and at the end of this presentation, just wanted to let you know, there are some changes that have been enacted to the Freedom of Information Act. And they're effective July 1 and they may affect council councils remote participation policy. So I'd like to go over those at the end of this. But we'll pick up now where we left off. We were at council procedure memorandum four. And my notes indicated we had discussed the proposed changes that I had suggested about making sure that the public hearing process that the applicant is not part of the public hearing process, which would preserve the council's ability to ask applicants in land use matters questions. Because again, typically your process, you don't ask speakers at a public hearing, you don't have a back and forth with them. Then we had talked about incorporating the proposed council procedure memorandum number 18 into this one. And again, that was to allow Zoom participation in public hearings as well as the matters from the public portion of the meeting. There really wasn't any discussion about that. It I didn't, it didn't seem to be any objection from councillors at that point about incorporating that into number four. And and again, it's just to allow Zoom participation in your public hearings and the matters from the public. I I guess just in case, is there, are there any questions about those aspects before we get to Vice Mayor Robertson's proposals?
Are there any questions?
This is Carolyn Doll. Maybe clarification, I don't know if it's in this would be in this one, but I would certainly like for us to allow the public to view the meetings through Zoom as well. Would that be a separate item or could that be incorporated into this one?
Mr. Rosenberg.
Well, I was, I was going to say that the public can presently view the meetings on Zoom via a link that is on the council website. Now, whether that that's separate and apart from whether you wish to incorporate it in the procedure memorandum to expressly provide for it or require it. But I wanted council members to be aware that it is, the meetings are presently viewable by the public using a link that is a Zoom link.
And and I'm, I that's up to the council. I'm happy to add that in when we put procedure memorandum number 18 and kind of merge that into four, if you'd like that explicitly.
Wouldn't that be a moot point? I mean, if it's already, it's done anyway. I mean, why, you just, you know, we don't have a problem with if it's.
Councillor Mead.
Because I wouldn't want it to be taken away. So I would like to have it expressly mentioned as a requirement that citizens be allowed to participate via the Zoom.
Everybody okay with that, having that edit?
Yeah.
Okay. You have your yes on that one.
All right. Now, council procedure memorandum number four, and again, just to stay consistent with what we did at the last meeting. Vice Mayor Robertson had made some suggestions and I'll try to summarize them and then turn it over to him. Number one was that individuals who speak at both public hearings and at the matters from the public would have three minutes instead of five minutes. The matters from the public portion of the meeting, there would be a total of 10 speakers allowed. It would alternate between those in person and via the Zoom platform. So that would be a total of 30 minutes. The proposal also stated that priority would be given if if somebody had spoken at one meeting, the first meeting of the month. At the second meeting of the month, priority would be given to anyone who did not have an opportunity to speak at the first meeting of the month during matters from the public. And it also included a proposal that each councillor after matters from the public concluded would have up to two minutes each to address anything that was stated during the matters from the public portion of the meeting. That's my summary of of what councillor or Vice Mayor Robertson had proposed. And again, just like last time, I'll turn it over to the floor. Turn the floor over to him.
Okay. Well, I put him out there to get some conversation and it worked, but anyway. Terry and I had a good conversation the other night. I personally, I'm still, because I'm trying to get as many people as we can, I I'm still in favor of of the three minute timeline. I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure I like the idea of of I know there's been discussion about signing people up. I don't know whether that's going to work or not. I think that creates more problems for our clerk and I think that would be an issue. I I do like the idea, like I said, three minute timeline. I, and I reckon I talked about I know Terry and I talked and I like possibility of of not basically saying maybe that, okay, you have to only be saying, if you talk this month, you you this week, you can't talk in two weeks. But I do like the. But I do like the idea of, and in relying on our citizens, relying on their, their ability to, you know, just common sense and said, you know, we ask you if, if you spoke at this meeting, please let somebody who didn't speak, speak at the next meeting. Now, if there's nobody else to speak, okay, but I mean, just use your common sense and use your, I reckon the kindness to allow them to, you know, to speak. Or somebody have the ability to speak that didn't. Okay? I think that's fair. Another point that we talked about, and I know that the mayor and I've talked briefly about it, I think. I don't know whether I brought that up with Terry or not. But the possibility to help the citizens maybe get them out of here a little earlier. And maybe have them actually speak right after, you know, instead of having to wait till the end of the meeting. Bring them in, have the mayor talk. Yeah, do the invitation. And then matters from the public. And that way, if anything is said, that, you know, that maybe we need to, we could listen to what the, what the people have to say. And then if they say something that maybe we, we could discuss it or whatever at that meeting. I'm just saying, I mean, you know, that we could at least hear what they're saying. Okay. So that's, that's, that's another point, just to move it out actually to the very beginning. Okay? So that, that, those are the main points. But just, you know, maybe move it to the beginning to let, let the citizens say what they want to say. Keep it to three minutes to allow even more people to do it, to talk. Ask for the citizens to have their, you know, to have common sense and, and, and their kindness to actually let if they spoke one meeting, not speak at the next meeting, or if there's nobody else speak, then they can, but you know.
And would there be a time limit?
The three minute.
I mean, a full time limit.
Yeah, I think we were talking, I, I like the idea of, we were talking thirty minutes. Basically give, open it up right after that and you have, we have thirty minutes. We open it up. I mean, school board does it. Nobody seems to have a problem. Nobody seems to have a problem with school board doing it. Other townships or in cities have done that, but basically open it up and then have a thirty minute time limit. And then we, then we get on after that with the matters of, of, of the business of the, of the city.
Counselor Holmes.
Couple of things that I have problems with. One, I don't think we should limit the time to thirty minutes, or you know, if it takes an hour for us to do it, we do it in an hour. If it doesn't, sometimes, you know, I think we, we've made a lot of these problems ourselves by not dealing with this earlier. We probably wouldn't have so many people here that are concerned about it. I think by, I could see maybe shortening the time a little bit that they speak, but I don't think that we should limit the number of people speaking, as long as they're not just saying the same thing over and over again. You know, if you got, say if somebody makes a point, don't get up and make the same point, you know. But, but I do think, I do think that that's part of our job is to sit here and listen to. And then when you put a limit on it, it makes it too easy for one side or the other to stack the people there that night. And I, and I think that would have a way of censoring what is said. You know, and I think we should have that at the end of the meeting instead of the beginning of the meeting because something might be said during our meeting that maybe needs to be addressed at the end of the meeting.
Are there any other comments?
Carolyn Doll.
Counselor Doll.
I, I don't think we should put any limits on the number of people who can speak, the amount of time in total, because for the most part, it's not that many people and it's not that much time. And as Mr. Holmes said, some of this has been brought on by council. I, I don't, I think any of those restrictions just start making us look like a third world country. Where we don't allow our citizens to speak. And that's the whole point. That's why we're all here. We're representing the citizens, the residents of Stanton. And if they have something to say, we, we need to listen. And I don't mean check your phone and not off. I mean, we should be sitting here listening to them. The, the only, the only change from what we have currently done is I don't think we should even consider saying, oh, if you spoke this time, you can't speak the next time. Because every, there could be a different issue every meeting that they, that a citizen wants to speak about. So I just think putting restrictions on it just does more, more harm than good. I know when the Second Amendment sanctuary people were speaking in matters from the public, we listened to about five hours between two meetings. And, and that was what we needed to do. And so I think for any other issue, we should, we should listen to, to the people. So, so I would, I don't see any adding any of those restrictions. And I'm in favor of keeping the current five minute. I think that's plenty of time. But it's not that, it's not that long a time. And a lot of people don't even use the five minutes.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Well, and the only thing that I would say with that, Carolyn, and let me get myself in trouble. The only thing I would say is that, and, and I appreciate your sign and exactly what I said. I don't have a problem with you speaking. I don't have a problem with you calling in. And I said, I don't have a problem with you zooming in. I'm allowing all those to happen. And now as far as you're saying, you wanted to let, you had on the Second Amendment, you allowed people to talk for five hours? Amen. Did this council listen to them or do anything about it? Just as, I mean, I'm just putting it out there, Ms. Doll. I mean, you know, all those, a lot of those people listening, wanted the point of view and the council, the council said, we were going to do what we're going to do, and they did it. Go ahead, Terry.
Counselor Holmes.
Two things. One, the outcome of the West Beverly Shopping Center might have been totally different if those people hadn't showed up. But we found out that there were a lot of people concerned about having a storage unit put in their backyard, you know, and, and a lot of us probably wouldn't have thought anything about it if they hadn't have showed up and told us. And, and, you know, and I mean.
They did that during a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Right. I know, but that's the same thing. I mean, we're talking about public hearings and.
We're talking about just the matters from the public.
But we're talking about restricting time and all this other stuff, aren't we?
We cannot restrict time on public hearings.
Will you, well, the public hearing, you can restrict the amount of time each speaker receives. But you cannot restrict the amount of speakers.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
And another thing, you know, that we didn't listen to them. Well, what'd they do? They voted us out. You know, and that's, and I mean, you've got to think about it. I mean, that's what we're here for. We're not, we're here to listen to the people. Maybe if we make the wrong decision, they'll decide them, let the door hit us on the butt on the way out.
Well, exactly.
You know.
And in three and a half years, my butt may be gone too. And y'all would probably like that.
Over the years, over the years, over the years, we have not usually had this many meetings that went, that the, the matters from the public went up. Sometimes we might have one person. You know, and, and, and I, I would hate, I, I work as much as anybody here. I probably work seventy, eighty hours a week plus here. You know, and I don't want to be here unless, I definitely don't want somebody here bitching at me, but you know, but you know, that's my job. That's why I ran for election and I knew that that was one of the, the downsides to taking the job. And I mean, I hear it at work. People come in and talk to me at work. And, and I, I've listened to them as much as I can, but sometimes like last night I was busy. I had to say, I gotta go. You know, and, but I think, I just think that anything we do to, to curtail their participation doesn't, isn't really good for us.
Okay, we're right at the time limit. Were there any other comments? Counselor Me.
Yeah, we got it at three twenty-one, an email from a citizen that I think put it very well. And I'm not going to share the entire email, but I will share a couple of items from his email. First, often it is clear, it is a clear indicator of the significance of an issue for the citizens when a large number of people show up to speak about it. If you will only allow a maximum of ten speakers, you may not fully appreciate how many people care or are concerned about a topic. Second, if you limit input to five speakers in person and five call in, there is no reliable way to gauge where on an issue the public stands. What if eight of the ten allowed speakers are against a particular outcome, but eighteen of the next twenty would turn out to be in favor of it? Third, there is no way to know if you are hearing the most compelling arguments for or against an issue. It may be that what would turn out to be the sixth speaker in attendance had something really enlightening to consider, but you don't hear from them because input had been cut off after five speakers. Fourth, even if it's not intended, limiting public input gives people the impression that city council isn't interested in hearing from the citizens they represent. As I wrote before, I appreciate that city council in the past at least has been willing to listen to what I have to say. I don't think I would be the only citizen who would feel some resentment if this were no longer the case.
All right. So right now, I mean, we're over time. What I'm hearing from the vice mayor is three minutes, an honor system. If you spoke at the last meeting, you allow the, someone that hasn't spoken to speak first. And then if there's time left, then you can speak. And that's just the honor system. Moving it to the beginning of the meeting, matters from the public will be after the invocation and moment of silence. Thirty minutes total and appears we're all in support of remote participation, which would be a call in and Zoom. And it would be my recommendation that it would go back and forth, allow someone from the audience to speak and then someone through remote participation. Mr. Claffey, any thoughts?
I'm questioning whether the during a public hearing, does that timeframe have to be the same as matters from the public?
No. No.
And I'm thinking that if we were to have public hearings, I think they're essential. And I think we have to listen to all of the constituents. And I think that was the big deal last year with the Second Amendment. We would never put it on an agenda so that we could have a public hearing. So therefore it got carried over to the matters from the public. I think that was the issue. So I'm thinking that we ought to allow public hearings to remain at five minutes. And with unlimited numbers of speakers.
I believe with public hearings, you have to allow unlimited.
Unlimited number of speakers at five minutes. And then in the matters from the public, let's try to maximize the number of people that are speaking to us by both having Zoom participation and in-person participation. But let's go to three minutes. It seems like a lot of our fellow cities are going to that. And we can hear from more people. And we can get more opinions in that matters from the public. So I see that we treat it differently. That makes sense, Terry?
But you're talking about no restriction. We, we answer every call until they're done.
For public hearings.
For matters from the public.
Well, it depends on when we do this. Matters.
Well, I think we should do it at the end of the meeting because if we do it at the beginning of the meeting.
We're going to have to eventually get to a meeting.
Right. And, and you know, but if we do it at the end of the meeting, one thing, people that really feel strongly are going to stay to speak.
Right.
And you know, if it's just somebody that was, you know, the one is felt as strongly, you know, they, they might go home, but I'm just saying at the end of the meeting, I think it's, we got everything else out of the way. And, and in this way, you know, if we have to sit here an extra hour, we will. But I, I have a feeling that if, if we can just get this passed and let everybody speak, we wouldn't have as many people here. And if you, and if you do it the other way, then you're going to have people out there who are going to be protesting, which is, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be an even uglier thing in the paper.
All right. We need to continue this conversation after the break. So we'll need to come back at six twenty. Right now we are now on break. It's now six twenty, so we are back from break. And that takes us to item number three under the work session, which is a continued discussion of city council procedure memorandum. All right. I'm just going to go straight to Mr. Blair and I'm going to bypass you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you for your kindness.
Thank you.
Just to summarize that right before we went to break, just again, to reiterate, in terms of a public hearing, the council cannot limit the amount of speakers at a public hearing. And again, that's, I know Counselor Claffey, you had mentioned five minutes for public hearing speakers and three minutes for matters from the public. That is within your discretion. But you, what is not within your discretion is to limit the amount of speakers at a public hearing.
Correct.
All right. Counselor Darby, did you have any comments?
Well, I think that when I think about the, the main goal is not, you know, making sure the folks feel like they're not being restricted. Then I, I, I do see some benefit to maybe having it at the beginning of a meeting. Because folks that have young children, you know, they could kind of get in and get out, make it more accommodating for them. And then I guess my question too would be to Vice Mayor Robertson is, I mean, I would think that if, let's say it's thirty minutes and then we get on to the business of, that at hand. You know, obviously if there's still people wanting to speak on a particular matter, then that could be heard at the end of the meeting, I would think. I mean, if that's something that we wanted to do. I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, I, I can't imagine that people, we would say that, you know, you're going to turn away. I don't know how often that would happen, but that's, that's what is coming to my mind when I'm listening to this discussion.
Okay. I would not be in favor of that. I would have it one or the other.
I really think it ought to be a two. Sorry. I'm thinking that it just, if we do it at the beginning of the meeting, it could really put us, you know, behind in other ways. We're going to be here anyway. I really don't think that we should limit the time of it. I mean, people, people, you know, we'll have, we'll have meetings where we might not have anybody get up. And then we'll have other meetings where, you know, they might really feel strongly about something. And I think we shouldn't restrict that. It's just it's, it's, it's one thing about Stanton and it's so great is everybody here, there's so many people here who are involved publicly. And, and, and I just think that I would want, not want to do anything to diminish that people that serve on boards or any other things, you know, they don't get paid, you know. You know, and, and things like Zoom has been a great addition because, you know, it, it just makes it so much easier for us to get good people. And if somebody has kids, they could come and get on Zoom. They could do Zoom and not even have to, they could put their kids to bed and, and, and be able to Zoom us in.
I mean, I understand. I, I was just looking for a little bit of compromise. I mean, I'm agreeing. I'm agreeing for everybody to talk. I'm agreeing to Zoom. I'm agreeing to call in. I just think there should be a three minute time limit. And just to, just to try to get as many people as we can. And that's, that's just my way of thinking, Terry. I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to give, I'm trying to give as much as I can. I'm just like a Lord of Return.
Well, you know, it's like, I'm, I'm not against returning back some of the time. But I, I just don't think that we shouldn't limit it to the number of people that speak.
Well, you know, the school board has two minutes. And you have to sign up at the beginning of the meeting. And if I'm not mistaken, you also put down what you want to discuss. And they have a thirty minute limit as well. And the school board does not have remote participation to my knowledge. So, I mean, the school board's. So, I mean, the school board's been practicing this for years, and it seems to work, it works fine. So I know Counselor Darby, you've been on the school board, and it, the two-minute, two minutes to speak was implemented, and thirty minutes total.
Yes, it's been like that for a long time.
Okay. And when I've served on the school board, it was at the beginning of the meeting is when the matters from the public would take place. And so the school board seems to function quite well. And they are not denying anyone their First Amendment rights.
Now, one thing, this, this, sorry.
No, I'm, I'm.
I'm down to turn, I mean. Dealing with maybe a third of the, the city's population, because it's parents and their children. Not dealing with everybody in the, in the city that might have something to say. You know, if you don't have children, you usually probably don't really have much interaction with the, uh, the school board. And also, you didn't have Zoom. Zoom is a new thing because of COVID. And before Zoom, you know, it was, you know, a lot of people probably didn't even know what was going on.
Well, they don't have Zoom now or remote participation with the school board, and we do. So we're opening it up even more.
Right, but we don't have any control over what the school board does. They're, they're.
But they, but they are able to provide proper communication and streamline their meetings, so.
If we have people sign. Sorry, go ahead, Carolyn.
Well, if you're not, I was going to, I was going to say that I am not in favor of any comments about, well, let's all be nice, and you, it's my, it's, I spoke, so you do it next time. That's not going to work. Nobody's going to keep track of that. So I'm trying to be realistic. And, and the fact is, our citizens should, should be allowed, because I believe it's their right to let us know what they think about any particular issue that has to do with the city. And that can be, it can be with an email, but it can be by Zoom, it can be in person. And I don't think there should be any limit on the amount of time that we listen to them. And I don't think there should be any limit in the number of people in person or the number of people on Zoom or any of that. That's just making it, you're, you're trying, it, it seems like you're trying to make it more difficult for our citizens to, voices to be heard. And I, I just don't think it's worth that. I think we're not doing our duty as elected officials to restrict their, um, their right to be heard. And, and I, you know, when you look at an issue that really brings a lot of people to the council meetings to speak, by limiting it, say they wanted to speak at budget time, and they want to speak in that, about the budget and ask questions or, or give us suggestions and, and all of that. Well, if you're going to limit it to thirty minutes, we will have already voted on the budget before everyone would get a chance to speak. And that's just silly. It's just silly.
That's why you can have it at the beginning of the meeting, allow them to speak at the beginning. And public hearings are set up for the budget. We can have public hearings at the council's discretion, and also.
Citizens can speak about the budget, not in matters from the public. They don't have to be limited to the public hearing.
Oh, absolutely, they can speak in matters from the public as well. But I, I wouldn't.
I wasn't finished just giving.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Because what I would like to see is for us to be open and transparent and be listening to citizens and not restricting them by, by having it a thirty-minute limit or limit in the number of people. I think we do them a disservice. But in the spirit of compromise, I could reduce the minutes to four.
Okay, I do know that other localities have guidelines when it comes to matters from the public, and they're duly elected. And I do not believe that our neighbors are offering a disservice to their citizens. So by having what has been suggested, I believe is fair.
That's, it, fair to who? It's not fair to the citizens?
It's, it's fair to all. It gives everyone an opportunity to be able to voice their opinions. Because when you have somebody that comes in and waiting and waiting, and then becomes discouraged and leave, at least this will streamline it. So at this point, I'm going to ask each council member, I'll start with Counselor Mead. What are your suggestions for the city attorney?
That I, I would like to leave matters from the public at the end of the city council meetings. I would like to leave the limit at five minutes. This, this survey, I, I, you know, I, I don't know why we're reaching out to other localities to tell us what to do. I don't know why the procedures that Scottsville, Virginia, population five hundred and sixty-five, how does that relate to Stanton? Does Scottsville even have a stoplight in town, for goodness sake? You know, why, if we had, if we had allowed the fact that eighty-six counties, twelve cities, and twenty-six towns decided to adopt a Second Amendment resolution, if we had decided by survey to allow that to happen, we'd, we'd, instead of asking Stanton citizens, who said by a three-to-one margin, no, we don't want that. So let's listen to what Stanton citizens have to say about this and not, and not what other localities are doing. That's like, that's middle school stuff. You know, call up your friends and find out what they're wearing to the party, for goodness sake. So, so let's, let's keep it at five minutes, and let's let people speak.
Mr. Claffey, you've already spoken, so.
I, I mean.
Unless you have some further comments.
Wait.
No, I think we should go to the three-minute. In the interest of hearing from everybody and having the meetings move along, I see the advantage of the three-minute, not in the public, um, public hearing portion, just in the matters from the public, cutting that to three minutes.
And at the beginning, and thirty minutes.
I'd like to see the straw poll on that. I mean, I, I'm willing to do it at the end of the meeting. If, if that's where we're going to allow everybody an opportunity, and we go to three minutes at the end of the meeting, I can do that.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'm, I'm for three minutes. I am for, I'm personally for at the beginning. I'm definitely for being able to call in, being able to Zoom in. And so, I mean, that's basically what I'm for, is that you're just basically trying to get it as many people can, but also in basically a thirty-minute limit so that we can then get on with the business of the city as well.
Right.
At the beginning.
Counselor Holmes.
I'm for keeping it at the end of the meeting. I'm for limited participation, alternating between Zoom and. I could live with three minutes, but I, I, I really think that it, we shouldn't do any, any other thing to hinder the people speak.
Counselor Darby.
I think the three minutes, I'm, I can go with that. I think that, you know, I think that in the, at the beginning or the end, I mean, it, it's really up to what, you know, I, I think you said, the, the, it's almost like what the data would show. So, you know, if we did it at the end, and, you know, that's working well, I, I can sit here and do that. But if there's a push, if people think about it and they decide, well, maybe at the beginning of the meeting would work, I mean, I'm fine with that, too.
All right, and Counselor Dole, I believe we know where you stand, but I'll give you the opportunity.
Well, thanks. I'm, I'm for keeping it at the end. I'm for not restricting it, just like we never restricted it before. I said I was willing to compromise at four minutes, but I think sometimes people have enough information that three is not long enough. And since we will not allow them to speak again, then they won't have the opportunity to say what they need to say. And I think that's a, that's a problem. But I really, I really want us to, you know, act like grown-ups here and not be an embarrassment to the city by not allowing our citizens to speak.
Okay, um, again, I'm at three minutes, the beginning of the meeting. Thirty minutes, allowing remote participation, which is call-ins as well as Zoom and alternate between citizens and the audience as well as the call-ins and Zoom. I would like to comment that we do take advice from our neighbors. They do not tell us what to do, obviously. We work in conjunction with our neighbors. Middle River Regional Jail, we're working in conjunction with our neighbors on that particular issue.
These are not neighbors.
So these, these.
They're not neighbors.
Well, Waynesboro, it's three minutes, excuse me, Waynesboro's four minutes. And then Augusta County's three minutes. So they, they are our neighbors. So being able to seek advice, it's a common practice. They seek advice from us. The city of Harrisburg right now is watching to see what Stanton is going to do on this issue. So it's not a matter of being told what to do, it's just a matter of seeking input. And public hearings are still an option. The Second Amendment, if that were a public hearing, that probably would have curtailed the, the multiple matters from the public that we had to sit and listen to the citizens that came out to speak. But the public hearing was not allowed at that time. So that is my wish, my recommendation.
This is Carolyn Dole. I have one piece of information to add. I don't know if anyone else is aware, but the FOIA Advisory Council had a meeting on this, our very problem. Public, a public, publicized meeting about Stanton and not allowing public input. So I, I personally am embarrassed. I never thought I would be on a council that would be trying to limit the rights of citizens to speak.
Are you aware of this, Mr. Blair?
I'm not aware of the FOIA Advisory Council addressing this, no. I, I do know, I believe the news leader reported, Megan Ryan, who's part of the Coalition for Open Government, did convene a meeting with reporters and others interested. But I'm not aware of the FOIA Advisory Council addressing Stanton.
So I'm assuming they looked at other localities practicing three minutes.
Right, but I, I can't, I, I, I don't want to either confirm nor deny. I just, I don't, I've not heard of that.
And also, I'm in agreement that we keep the public hearings at five minutes, so. All right, so do you have?
I do.
We move on now to procedure number five.
Yes.
This is Carolyn Dole. What was, so what's going to be in that memorandum? I didn't hear a consensus there.
Counselor Dole, John Blair here. Based on the feedback, and I'm going to just go on what a majority of individuals indicated here at the, just now at the work session. This will be, the memorandum will state the following, that public hearings, the comment time will be five minutes for citizens to comment. I can add it in there, it's sort of a, a superfluous, because state law doesn't allow to limit the amount of people who can speak at a public hearing, but I can certainly put that in there, that it's unlimited. It seemed like, based on the comments tonight, that the, the matters from the public would remain at the end of the council meeting. There would be a time limit, total time limit of thirty minutes. Speakers would be limited to three minutes. Zoom participation would be allowed to, and it would alternate between in-person and Zoom participants. There seem to be four, four counselors in favor of that option.
I, I like a recount on the, on the, on that time limit. I didn't hear that.
Okay.
I didn't either.
Go ahead, Counselor Claffey.
We're talking about the end of the meeting, going three minutes?
Right, and.
No, I'm talking about thirty minutes.
Total of ten speakers at the end of the meeting.
With thirty minutes total.
I'll go no limit.
No, okay, then there will not be, that, I thought you were, had indicated a limit.
I just want the three minutes, no limit.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay.
I think, I think this was, I think by not limiting the amount of people, we're doing the citizens of, they're, they're going to do us a lot of favors here by agreeing with us, and maybe we won't have as much, uh, uh, conflict when we're in our meetings.
And, and there's always the option of having a vote while somebody is making their comments to allow that person, I could make a motion, for instance. If someone was at three minutes and I felt that they hadn't had an opportunity to finish their remarks, I could make a motion that they should be able to continue and finish their remarks. Isn't that correct?
I believe, yes, ma'am, you, you certainly can make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you.
That would have to be a majority rule.
Correct.
It would, but I could make that.
Yeah, you could absolutely make the motion, it would have to be majority rule. All right, next procedure. Now, we're not voting on anything tonight, this is just a discussion, so.
Okay.
All right, procedure memorandum number five, the grant applications.
Yes, number five, the grants applications. Counselor Mead had proposed adding the following language and amending the final sentence to read that the city manager shall have the authority to approve and submit the grant application on behalf of the city without submitting the same for review and approval to city council, except in the following cases, grants that require city funds or property to be contributed as a matching or percentage share, or B, grants that require a resolution, ordinance, or other authorization from city council. Councilmember Dole had, had also said that she agreed with that when I was taking comments from the council to make that amendment. And I will, again, turn it over to Counselor Mead, if you want to say anything further.
This is just a return to the practice that we had in place in prior years, where it, it saved, it saved the city time, it saved the taxpayers' time. You know, we approved a number of grants post-application and post-approval. I think we even had to approve some grants after the money had been spent. And that just, to me, that's kind of a waste of time. I think the city manager should have that authority. And, and it, and, and it, you know, it, it really, you know, from a practical standpoint, all we're doing is rubber, rubber stamping those grants.
Counselor Mead, does the wording include that the city manager will bring us up to date the next meeting?
It doesn't, but if you feel that that's important, I don't have a problem with that.
I think that's the most important thing. I don't think we've ever overwrote any of the grants. We were tickled to have the applications submitted on a timely basis. We just want to know about them. I thought that was the original point of the memorandum way back, back last July, was that we would be notified of any, any grants that were being applied for. So I don't have a problem with it, just as long as we become aware at the next available meeting, what, what grants have been applied for. Is that fair?
This is Carolyn Dole. I, I, I agree with Mr. Claffey. I think it's helpful to know that we got a grant. But I, I would think that it would be okay if Mr. Rosenberg would, would let us know about any grants awarded to us through this process that didn't require a match during his, the matters from city manager. But I don't want to hear about the ones they write for and they don't get. I mean, personally, just to be efficient, you know, I would like for him to tell us when, when we've been awarded any.
Okay, Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if push comes to shove, as long as I, I want to know about them. I, I want to know, you know, if the city manager says, hey, you know, we've got a grant that we want to apply for, I, I want the ability to say, well, what's in the grant? What, you know, how much are we looking at? How's it going to help us? I, I'd like to, I'd like to know that. I reckon I just have a thing, maybe it's just me. I, I, I'd like to know, because it's the people's money that we're, we're looking at. I want to know about it. But if, you know, if, I mean, if there's a consensus. But if, you know, if, I mean, if there's a consensus that, you know, that we're going to find out about it. If we can find out it before, that's great. If it's the week after it's done, is, you know, then I still, I want to know about it. I mean, I'm, you know. That's the only thing, I, I just want to know about what money's applied for, you know, either before, or possibly if you, if it's a timeline, after it's, after it's applied for, the next week, whatever, during the meeting, I want to know about it.
Counselor Holmes.
I think Mr. Rosenberg always tells us when we get a grant. I mean, I, I mean, it's, it's a feather in everybody's cap, I think, to, to get free money, you know, or, or at least, you know, money that we don't have to spend. And in my whole time on council, I, I think that we've always been informed about grants that we've received. And, and it's always brought to us if we have to make a matching fund or matching part of a grant. So I, I don't think that, I mean, you can put it in writing again, but I think that it's already being done.
Right, Counselor Darby.
I, I want to know about it, you know, just to have the information, and again, to know what's going on. I think if he reports it to us, you know, again, either before or right after it's submitted, I'm fine with that.
Counselor Mead. Concerning the grants.
I'm sorry?
Are you, you are in agreement with what's been
Yeah.
mentioned, okay.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
When council first adopted these procedure memorandum at the organizational meeting last year, at a meeting following that, either the first or second meeting subsequent, we had, we came forward with some possible alternative language that I think is consistent with what you all are discussing here this evening. And that was, of course, before Mr. Blair's arrival, the city attorney. So I just remind all of the council that we had developed that language, and I will share it with Mr. Blair so that he might use it as a starting point to address this issue in whatever revisions he prepares and brings forward to council. But certainly, you know, we try to err always on the side of providing as much information as possible to members of council. And I see no reason why we can't come up with a mechanism by which we would keep council members informed of even applications for grants as they are submitted.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Blair.
Okay. Council Procedure Memorandum Number Six, and I had an accompanying ordinance amendment. But currently, the city code requires that unless there is a conflict of interest, the entire council has to vote to allow somebody to abstain from any other vote. And I noticed this in the procedure and the ordinance and in the practice that I've, I've observed both before I got here and since. It is a common practice that if a council member is not at a meeting, that they abstain from voting on the minutes of that meeting. And technically, per the city code, there should be a vote by the city council to allow that. But it seems like it's a common practice that when somebody says, I wasn't here, I'd like to abstain, there's no vote taken. This just, the ordinance and the proposed amendment to the Procedure Memorandum would simply allow somebody to state, I'm abstaining, and there wouldn't need to be an official vote to allow that person to abstain from approving minutes.
Everyone okay, Counselor Mead?
Yeah, I have a question about that. Not related to, not related to the abstention because of not attending a meeting, but the, the way it seems to read is that if a council member chooses to abstain from, from a vote on what they feel are ethical grounds, that may not be the quote-unquote or capital C conflict of interest, that the remainder of council has to vote, has to vote to allow them to abstain from the vote. So, so if I, for instance, felt it was unethical for me to vote on an issue that would have provided payment of my attorney's fees in a lawsuit, if I, if I chose to abstain from that vote, would the rest of council have to vote to approve my abstention in advance?
That is the way that the code is currently written, and the Procedure Memorandum is currently written.
I don't think we've ever done that.
I don't think we have either, to be honest with you. I know that I had, when I first came on council, I don't, part of the, I own some stock in Domo Jackson at the time, and, and, and I had to abstain from voting on some stuff for that. And until, and I sold my stock, so I wouldn't have to worry about that.
Can you reword it?
Well, I can, now.
The code, stay code.
Couple of things. Currently, it's written concerning the Conflict of Interest Act. And in that particular instance, Counselor Holmes, that you're talking about, I think you would have had to have abstained from the vote regardless, because you had it. And, and so the code would have allowed you to abstain without receiving a vote from council. Ms. Mead, you're, you're talking more about something that's not covered by the Conflict of Interest Act, but you might feel uncomfortable voting on.
Sure, if a family member were involved in a transaction, I would probably abstain, choose to abstain.
And, and you all, that's at the council's discretion, whether you want to amend your ordinance and your Procedure Memorandum. There's nothing that would prohibit you from allowing a member to abstain without a vote of the full council. You could, you could put that into your memorandum and your ordinance, or you can leave it as it. But, but to answer your question, you can't amend it that way. But that's, that's up to the council's prerogative. There's nothing legally that requires it one way or the other.
The way it's written.
If, if, if we left it as it is, it would mean that if I wished to abstain from a vote and the remainder of council or the majority of council did not feel my abstention was appropriate, then they would compel me to vote. Is that correct?
Correct. Now, I've got a question. Because I don't know whether, Ms. Mead, I don't know whether that was aimed at me or not. But.
Counselor Doll has abstained from many votes affecting family members.
I understand that, but I know where you're going with it. And my next question is, my next question is, does, in the reverse, are you saying also that city council could force me to abstain by a vote?
I did not say that.
I just, I just asking. That's all I'm asking.
I did not say that.
Because the previous, the previous city attorney said, because if you're talking about, about my brother, because you wanted to make sure, and he said, I don't live with the man. I don't get any monetary money from the man. And so therefore, I was not obligated to abstain. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
And I want to make sure you understand that, that I, if I choose to have a different standard of ethics that I wish to be accommodated than what you might choose. So if my personal standards of ethics.
I don't even like where you're going there.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, you know, I, I'm asking because if I feel strongly that an abstention is the appropriate action to take, then I wish to be able to do that.
And so be it.
So. I agree with that. I think you should be able to abstain if you, if you.
Okay.
And I will too, and I have done so on this council.
I just want a point of clarification from the attorney, though. So there is no way that the council can force an abstention?
No, Mayor Oaks, and, and I don't want to, I mean, clearly, I, I'm not talking about anybody's personal life or anything in the past. Just a pure hypothetical, no. The council may not force somebody to abstain from a vote. The Conflict of Interest Act can force you to abstain from a vote.
Okay, point of clarification. Thank you.
This is Carolyn Doll. I had a question about, about maybe the origins of, of this memorandum. And I can't remember if there's anything in the charter that references voting, that all, all council members are expected to vote. And I wondered if the reason for this memorandum had anything to do with the fact that sometimes people will abstain when it's a vote that's, that's caused a, a lot of excitement in the locality, particularly come election time or reelection time, where people don't want to be on the record as voting one way or the other. Do you think there's any connection to that?
Counselor Doll, I don't believe there's anything in the city charter, but between now and the next meeting, I will check on that. But I don't believe, when I looked at it, there was anything, because I found this provision, yeah, you know, it's, not every locality has it, but to your point, I, if I were to guess, and I have read materials, I'm in the Local Government Attorneys of Virginia organization. Believe Lynchburg has a similar provision in their city code. And their city attorney, through correspondence and talking to him through the years, I think you're exactly right, that their idea of saying you can't abstain just because you want to abstain is to avoid folks being able to not vote on a controversial issue. And I would imagine Stanton's provision in its city code is based on similar reasoning.
So if we had a, if somebody abstained and then we ended three, three times, it would just automatically wouldn't be approved.
Correct.
Would not be approved.
Not be approved, yeah.
Exactly. Maybe the issue would die.
Yeah.
All right, so what's council's pleasure?
Well, this is Carolyn Doll again. I, I do have an interest in not letting people abstain because they don't want to take a position on a contentious issue. So I don't know how, but I don't know that we want to vote to allow somebody to abstain from minutes, approving minutes that they weren't here for. I mean, that's common sense. So is there any, is there any halfway, is there any amendment of the memorandum that would still indicate, we don't, our expectation is that council members will vote unless they have a conflict of interest or, or were absent from a meeting, or, I don't know, something like that.
Well, Counselor Doll, that's, I, current, the, the proposal that I had written was about abstaining from minutes, and that's before you. As to your question about conflict, again, the way it's written, as well as the Stanton City Code, it is written that if you have a conflict of interest per the Conflict of Interest Act, you can abstain without a vote. I think Counselor Mead is getting at, what if I have what I perceive as a conflict but is not covered by the Conflict of Interest Act? And, and I don't want to speak for you, Counselor Mead, but is that accurate?
It's the appearance, it's the appearance of a conflict of interest.
Yes.
All right. Counselor Claffey, any thoughts?
Can you word it? I mean, I, I agree with what Carolyn's saying. You know, we don't want people to avoid controversial issues by saying I abstain. Well, I mean, we, we have to do our job.
Right, I mean, if people elect us to do a job.
Exactly. So here's, here's a possible compromise based on, on your, on Counselor Doll and Counselor Mead and the rest of council, sort of what I've heard, would be the idea of adopting the memorandum and ordinance as presented, but adding something that would allow a counselor to abstain if they cited the appearance of a conflict of interest. However, I think in order to, I, certainly, I'm not talking about any of the seven of you, but there might be people who would take advantage of that. I think there should be a provision that would allow a counselor to inquire what the appearance of a conflict is, if somebody, so that it isn't just, I don't want to vote on a controversial issue. I think your colleagues, I don't know how y'all feel, but maybe allowing, if somebody had a question, you could ask the counselor who says, I have the appearance of a conflict of interest, what it is.
Well, what, what, if you, I said, in the case that I did with our previous, previous city attorney, but I, I said, do I have a conflict here? And he, so that's what I said, if, yeah, I, I would say if we think that we have a conflict, we then ask our city attorney, who we hired to do that job. And the advice I was given is you do not have a conflict based on, you know, the proper laws. So I went ahead and voted.
Sure.
But, but I mean, if I was told that, yeah, there is a conflict, well, then I'm not going to vote. I mean, you know, the, the citizens elected us to do a job, and we hired you to be our representative, and if we have a question as to whether it's a legal vote, then we should ask you. And if you tell us one way or the other, fine. And if Ms. Mead feels like she has a, feels the appearance of a conflict, and she wants to go, that's fine. She can do that, I think. I mean.
Without a vote from the council?
Without a, yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I'm going to trust, I mean, the citizens trusted each of us with their votes. They voted us into this office, and I'm going to trust Ms. Mead to, to act accordingly. I mean, is she, I'm sure, I mean, I respect Ms. Mead. If she feels like she has a, a conflict or appears, then fine, she can not vote.
And if we miss a meeting, we, we should not be required.
Right, if you miss a meeting, you shouldn't be able to vote on a amendment.
On the minutes or anything, yeah. It makes sense. Why don't you just word it the best you can and bring it back to us at our next meeting, you know, you know, final status?
This is Carolyn Doll again. To me, the, I wouldn't have a problem stating that I was abstaining due to an appearance of a conflict of interest and stating what it, what it is. I don't have a problem. And I think everyone should do that, whether or not we actually take a vote on it. But the, there should be a statement of why you're doing that.
It should be on the record, I agree.
Hopefully, it's because I've won the lottery and I own half of the property instead.
Share, please share.
All right.
All right, it looks like the majority says just that, that we can abstain. First off, because we're supposed to, due to a conflict of interest. But if we feel that there is some sort of ethical issue to sustain, as long as we put it on the record why, then we do not need a vote from the council. Is that correct?
Correct, as well as the minutes.
As well as the minutes, exactly. Okay.
All right.
I thought that was going to be an easy one. All right. Number seven.
Well, I did, there weren't any markups on seven through 11 that I received, but the next would be 12. And on Council Procedure Memorandum Number 12, Councilmember Doll said she would like to delete, or Councilmember Doll said she would like to delete Section 2 of Council Procedure Memorandum Number 12. And she would also like to include a provision which prohibits any council member or group of council members from obligating the city to expend public funds except through a briefing and vote of the full council. And any expense obligated in any other manner would become the personal responsibility of any council member or the mayor. Additionally, on this one, Councilmember Mead proposed a sentence number, and she would like to add number four. If the mayor expends any funds pursuant to Section 2 of this memorandum, the mayor will report the expenses to the city council at the council's next regular meeting. And again, per the procedure we're following, I'll let both Counselor Mead and Counselor Doll expound on, on, if they wish, what they've proposed.
Well, my suggestion to add that item number four is pretty much along the same lines of the requirement that we ask the city manager to report grants that the city has won or applied for. It, it just seems good practice that, that the public would know what public funds are being spent for.
Counselor Doll.
All right, this is Carolyn Doll. And, and basically, there's no need for the mayor to have any spending authority, nor individual spending authority, nor any individual city council member. So to me, it should just, this whole memorandum should just say that, that, that no one. that no one, you know, individual council member has any spending authority, that it should always happen with a briefing, a discussion, and a vote. And that if anybody does obligate the city and expends funds without that, they should be responsible for payment.
Madam Mayor.
I don't think of it as happened.
Yeah. Well, I reckon, Ms. Counselor Dole, I mean, was it ever a problem in the 10 or 12 years you were mayor? You had that spending authority of that $200, $250. Did you ever spend any of that money?
No, I did not.
You never spent?
Never needed to.
I see, okay.
Actually, did one time when I went to the first cities meeting in Lynchburg for my registration. I would like to see this just remain the same. It hasn't been an issue in the past, and it has never been a problem for previous mayors. So I would just like to see it remain the same.
And no council member has the right, other than the mayor, to spend any money, correct?
Yeah, and it's $250.
$250? I mean, I don't see a problem with it in an emergency.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with it either, but I would like to know that the money has been spent. I'm not asking for permission. I am simply saying that that money is public money, and it should be reported.
It is on the city's books, and it is open to the public. So I would just like to see it remain the same. It hasn't been a problem in the past.
It hasn't been a problem because nobody used it.
You used it, Counselor Claffey.
I agree with Councilwoman Mead that it should be reported at our next meeting, but the policy should stay in place as it is. The mayor has the authorization to spend $250 at her leisure anytime. Just report it at the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
Well, no one has had any discussion about the fact that council members, that really the memorandum should say that no individual council member has spending authority, and that any expenditure should be through a briefing and a vote.
I'm reading this, I'm reading this that the mayor is the only one that has spending.
I mean, no council members.
That's what I'm reading.
Well, Counselor Claffey, the way that it's currently worded, and I want to let Counselor Dole, Councilwoman Dole expound on this. Right now, the only individual on council that has the authority per memorandum 12 that's empowered through this is the mayor per Section 2 of that memorandum. But Counselor Dole, do you want to expound on what you were talking about? Because it sounded like you were talking about something different than the mayor's spending authority.
Well, I think, you know, the mayor, you know, there's really not an instance where any mayor now or in the past or whenever needed to have that spending authority. And it's cleaner just not have it. And to always vote if you're going to spend money that's not already in the budget and approved and appropriated and allocated and all that. And so, but in the absence of that, we've had cases in this past year where council members have obligated the city to expenditures without a vote. And so I would like to just make sure everybody knows that council members individually or a couple, you know, anything less than a vote on it, you cannot spend cities' taxpayers' dollars.
All right, Ms. Mayor Robertson?
No, I don't have anything. I, no.
You want to see it changed, kept the same?
I just want to see it kept the same. I mean, I don't think it's been a problem. I mean, I don't have a problem with, you know, if you have, if you have an emergency and the mayor can spend up to $250, then if you want to report it at the next meeting that I spent that, fine.
All right.
The next proposal came from Councilmember Dole for Council Procedure Memorandum 14. And on that specific proposal, currently, the memorandum reads that, when talking about naming a public facility in honor of an individual group, business, or organization that made a contribution to Stanton, Virginia, or the U.S., currently, Section C reads that the individuals who have been deceased at least two years, and Councilmember Dole wants to take out at least two years after deceased. And again, just going with the same practice we've gone through with the others, I will allow Counselor Dole to expound on that.
Yes, when I was reviewing this, it was very clear that the B and C were illogical because what it's saying is that if you're alive, we can name something after you tonight. But if you happen to die, we have to wait two years to name something after you. And it just, it's just not, it doesn't make any sense. So in reality, it could be just combined, individuals, living or dead, you know, and just say that because there shouldn't be a waiting, you know, the dead person is not going to do anything to tarnish their name because they're dead. The living person, in fact, could do something further down the line that would make you sorry you'd name something after them. So it's just not logical, and I thought it would be a more professional response is to not have that differentiated.
I'm going to start with Counselor Darby.
I think that Councilwoman Dole, you know, she actually makes a good point there. So, you know, I'm fine with that change.
I agree. I think that's perfect.
Councilmember Mead?
Yeah, I agree.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson.
I, yeah, I agree in that sense. But, yeah, well, okay. I don't know what else to say about that because you're right, Carolyn. I hadn't read that part, but it makes, yeah.
I agree. All we're actually doing is eliminating C. I would write the language to incorporate what Counselor Dole said, that both living and deceased individuals.
Mr. Rosenberg, why was it written that way?
Madam Mayor, I'm afraid I can't offer an explanation to you. It's been in place since well before my arrival with the city eight years ago. That's been the provision in the policy, and I don't know its origins.
I will, I will say one thing. I'd like, if you don't mind, and Terry and Carolyn, to your point, now that it's done, and I think I know why you want it, and I understand that, but you have to understand where the four of us were coming from when you wanted to do that, both of you, in naming that street for Bruce.
It wasn't a street, it's a little park.
Okay, I understand that, I understand that, I understand that. But what I'm trying to tell you is that if we had have done that after we made the family of Rita Wilson, a black lady, wait for two years before that was named, this council chamber was named for her, and then we had have done that for Bruce right after, can you imagine what would have come down on top of us?
Nothing, nothing. Because I tell you right now, Rita Wilson would have been the first person that would have wanted.
Well, I agree that, but there's a lot of people, I think, that would have really tried, because, well, I beg to differ with you, but anyway, I'm just thinking that we would have caught a lot.
But, you know, I polled each one of you personally, and each one of you said you were fine with naming it after that. And then all of a sudden, this came up in a meeting, and I couldn't understand why because that little grassy area has no name. It has no name, and it's, you know, and the fact that Bruce was a great citizen and a great councilman, and I.
We agree with that.
And I agree with that. I have, I mean, because I loved Bruce too, but.
All right, well, a point of order. So, Mr. Rosenberg, you might be able to help out on this. Ms. Taylor, her daughter wanted to name the pool house at Montgomery Hall Park after her mother, and she was advised no because she, her mother was not deceased, and she had to wait two years. So can you comment about that? Because.
She was not deceased.
Yeah, and she was told no.
Well, no, but if she was not deceased, that's somebody just made that decision not to do it because you can name it after a living person, you just can't name it after.
But she was, but either way, she was told no. And also, Vice Mayor Jones, his family had to wait before the conference room at Montgomery Hall Park was named after him, as well as the kitchen was named after, I'm having a senior moment, they had to wait two years. So just please understand the rationale and the concern with changing this. Also, I believe, it's my interpretation that it was put in there so emotions were not so heightened that it gave everyone a chance to.
Calm down.
Yes, just kind of calm down from heightened emotions and look at the possibilities.
I will add one quick thing. I know the break is scheduled for 7:15. I had to look this up. I'm a former stamp collector, so, but I do wonder if perhaps this is part of the changing rationale. You know, U.S. stamps, it used to be you had to be deceased for 10 years before they would put you on a stamp, except if you were a president, they would put you the year after you died. A few years ago, they changed it to you had to be deceased for five years. And now they are honoring living individuals on stamp. So there has been, I mean, to, I don't know if that's any of the rationale, but stamps have followed sort of a progression through the years of less and less time until today, now living people can be on a postage stamp.
Okay, well, I believe we have a majority on that, on that issue. So next is number 15.
Correct. And this may, Counselor Dole, I do, you had proposed on 15, which is the consent agenda, Council Procedure Memorandum, you'd like to remove application and acceptance of grant funds from that portion. But I do think perhaps, and I'll let Mr. Rosenberg comment, if we change the Council Procedure Memorandum 5, that may make that moot. But I will let the city manager address.
Well, that was the point that I was going to make, Mr. Blair. And I'd ask you, Councilmember Dole, if you're comfortable keeping that provision in this particular memorandum, if we make the changes to the memorandum concerning grant submissions to council.
This is Carolyn Dole. I would love to tell you it was okay, but it's, but I don't like that because if these are grant funds that aren't being handled the way we just discussed, this means that we've got match involved in grant, in the remainder grants we are applying for. And I think if there are tax dollars involved for match, those are things that we should have in the public meeting and just have the briefing and ask questions because there are tax dollars involved in those grants. And that's why if we do the one, then I think we shouldn't have these grants on a consent agenda because folks who, you know, for someone who can't, who can't see, they can't read the briefing ahead of time, or if they don't have internet access and they come to the meeting. And I think it's worth it for the, to have the grants that have match requirements to go ahead and just deal with them as an agenda item. That's my thinking on it.
Counselor Darby, any thoughts?
Still thinking, ask somebody else for a second. Still going on.
Well, I'm for putting that in there if it's, you know, because we all should have some say.
You mean not to have it in the consent agenda, but list it separately on the agenda?
Right.
Okay, I'm in agreement.
That would be consistent with the way that we've been doing it previously. So we'll just, we'll just keep doing it that way. And so this, I think that, I have no concern with this.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because if it involved, yeah.
Okay.
At all of them?
All right, we have two more.
Oh. All right, three minutes because we've got to take a break.
Proposed Council Procedure Memorandum number 16. This is something I thought that does need to be clarified, which relates to the Freedom of Information Act and the council. The first aspect of it is that council members' emails, the city will be considered the custodian for the email transmissions. And that's when FOIA requests come in, that's a complicated way of saying, when FOIA requests come in, as you know, the city's FOIA officer asks you all for any emails responsive to the request, and you provide them, and then they're provided to the request or if exemptions are made. This codifies that because technically, you can be your own custodian of your emails, but that would put a lot of potential liability on you if you said, I'll handle all FOIA requests for my emails. This codifies that, or not codifies, but establishes it as the procedure as it's currently followed, but it puts it in a policy. Additionally, any and all FOIA requests made to a council member shall be immediately directed to the city's FOIA officer. And that's because, as you know, there are deadlines with the Freedom of Information Act. So when you receive a request, we'd ask, per this policy, you report it to the FOIA officer so that the request can be fulfilled within the time limits. Third, the council member has the authority to waive any reasonable charges. If you go through your email, you do have the authority under FOIA to charge for, per your council salary, time spent retrieving those emails. This policy says you, as a counselor, may waive that time expense if you want, or you can charge it. It's your discretion as to what you want to do as a counselor. But the council member can't waive charges that the city incurs, meaning city staff. And finally, at the expiration of your term in office, and this is something that I've seen in other localities, it's asking that the council member provide their emails that are, that contain public business. There will be a flash drive provided, and you put it on there. And so that way, when requests come in, FOIA requests come in for your emails and you're off council, it'll just go through the city and the city will respond for you. You know, once you're off council, you know, you don't have to worry about somebody contacting you and saying, hey, we need the emails from this date or that date. The flash drive will be provided, you'll provide it to the city, and then the city will respond to any request once your term has expired on council.
Counselor Mead?
So what that number three says is that a council member may waive reasonable charges.
Yes.
So what does that mean?
That's what's in the Freedom of Information Act, it calls it reasonable charges.
And, but what does that mean?
Well, that means that the time spent is one thing.
Well, I mean, how much do you charge per hour? I mean, so based on the mayor's salary, if she's, if she attends 21 meetings a year and spends four hours at each one.
Right.
That's roughly $142 an hour.
Correct.
And the rest of council will be about $119 an hour. So is that considered reasonable? Because you took a reasonable approach to coming up with a number?
Well, there's an actual FOIA advisory council opinion on that from Stafford County, Virginia. And in that case, they took the board of supervisors' member, and they had the board member estimate how much time per week they spent on board business. And I think that's reasonable. That's reasonable. If I said to you, Counselor Mead, and let's say you wanted to charge, I'd say, well, give me an estimate of how many hours per week you spend on council business, then we'd take. Then we'd take your salary and divide it by that number of hours in a year to come up with the hourly wage.
Okay. I'm going to have to cut this off at this point. We're going to have to continue the discussion of the last two at our next meeting. And then.
We could, we could do it at the tail end of your regular meeting tonight, so that you're ready to, so that we can bring back you for action.
I understand that. All right. What's the will of the council?
Let's, let's get it over with.
All right. All right.
Get it over with.
All right. I don't know how long we'll be here, but that's fine. That's what we're here for. All right. So we will pick this up. We're on a break. We'll be back at 7:30. Actually, we're not on a break. The close, the work session is now closed.